All right, now being 5:30, I'll call the July 22 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. The first item on our agenda is a final interview with Animal Control Officer for the Animal Control Officer position, Mr. Brian Kling. Mr. Kling, would you like to come forward?
Thank you.
All right, do either one of you want to kind of do an intro?
Sure.
Okay.
So we had advertised for an Animal Control Officer who in this town also serves as our Animal Inspector, and we put together kind of an informal group of Selectmen Mark Russo, myself, and Police Chief Patrick Dillon, and we interviewed the candidates that we thought whose qualifications kind of matched up with what we were looking for in the job description and the job posting, and we unanimously decided to forward Mr. Kling's name to the Board of Selectmen for a final interview, and references were checked and were favorable.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Kling, why don't you tell us about yourself?
Currently the Animal Inspector in the town of Halifax. I've volunteered in a few different places, one of which is the Kingston Animal Shelter where I've been for about nine years or so. Also volunteered a few other places that are not animal welfare-related too. Prior to that, I had about 25 some odd years in customer service and IT with the EMC Corporation, remote customer service. Have also provided in-person or field customer service. I used to work in the music industry, so also dealing with people face-to-face and whatnot. I enjoy the current role that I've got as an Animal Inspector. It's nice. It doesn't impact any of the other things I do because it's kind of an on-call thing. This sounds similar, so I'm very interested in it.
Great, very good. Mark, do you have some questions?
Sure, I have a couple.
So the job occasionally involves de-escalating intense situations. Are you comfortable with that being an aspect of the job?
Yeah, I don't know about the word "comfortable," but I'm experienced with it. I've had to do it in a first-level support working for the EMC Corporation, multi-billion-dollar corporation where people were calling in after buying millions of dollars of equipment and they were upset because it wasn't working. So you can escalate a situation like that to the next level of support too, but you also want to talk the person down a little bit and realize that it's not personal, it's business. They're not upset at you, they're upset at the situation. I do that right now in Halifax too. Every time I'm out on a dog bite call, I've got one that's outstanding right now, so I know I might be getting a call on it. I look at it as I represent the town of Halifax too, every time I walk into somebody's property too. If this was to work out, I'd look at it the same way, but I'd represent the town of Plymouth too, and I want to represent Plymouth in the best way I possibly can.
Somewhat similarly, as far as balancing various aspects, the job entails being an advocate sometimes, advocates for peoples, advocates for animals sometimes. Are you comfortable with that part of the position?
Yeah, and again, I've had to do that, not had to do that, but I actually enjoy doing that, advocating for animals and also for people as well too. We do selectmen's hearings for certain dog bites in Halifax, and I'll advocate to not euthanize an animal. In some cases, I have when it's been dangerous too. We have a court case that's currently pending right now. I've been down to Plymouth District Court a couple of times. Advocate for the animal in this case and not the person. So yeah, either one, whoever I believe is right.
Okay. John, do you have some questions?
No, I'm fine. I'm glad we've got somebody of your caliber.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So this would not, you don't see this having any detrimental impact to your duties in Halifax?
No, in fact, my current manager's a health agent over there, Kathy Dryan, and she and I have talked about this. In fact, she recommended this to me. Otherwise, I wouldn't have spoken about it if it wasn't for her. We've talked about this, and I see no impact to Halifax or conversely with what I do in Halifax to impact what I would do here either.
Great.
It seems like this not being a full-time role and it's kind of more of an on-call thing, except for barn inspection season, it's just whenever something comes up, you work it out and make it, get it done as soon as you possibly can.
Are you the Inspector of Animals in Halifax as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I do have one question. How does that work in Halifax vis-a-vis the relationship to the police?
Well, the Animal Inspector in Halifax, which is the current role I have, is separate from the Animal Control Officer. We also have an Animal Control Officer. She works for the Police Department. I work for the Board of Health, the Health Department. So the ACO is, they do investigation for dog bites, cat bites as well, and so on and so forth. My role as an Animal Inspector, primary role is rabies control. So I'll go and, again, I'm waiting for a phone call back right now on a dog bite. So I'll go not for behavior but looking for indication of rabies and whatnot, various lengths of quarantines that we have to do, and in the fall, we do barn inspections too. So the segregation is the Animal Control Officer works for the Police Department, and in my case, the Animal Inspector works for the Health.
Right.
Yeah, this is a dual role from my understanding.
So you don't have a problem with that?
Nope, nope. It's just different hats.
All right.
I'm fine.
Any more questions? Liz, do you have any questions?
No, no further questions.
All right, I don't have any questions either. Well, thank you very much. I think we would like to appoint you now if you're agreeable.
I've already discussed this with my wife and with Kathy as well too, so if you guys are interested, I'm also interested. I think I would like to, if it's okay, do the appointment, but I'd like to speak with the current Animal Inspector and ACO just to get a couple of, get his thoughts as far as what their actual position entails. I'm fine with going ahead with the appointment though.
Okay, all right. How long is the appointment? Are we going to do a three-year appointment?
I would recommend doing a start date maybe August 1st. I'm just trying to think of what's less complicated for our payroll department, and I would go through June 30th.
Okay. All right.
Three has the appointment slips. I believe it's different dates for the Animal Inspector position.
Okay.
Yeah, that runs on a different.
Different, yes. Okay, very good. All right. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian Kling, the Animal Control Officer, effective August 1st, 2019 until June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, okay.
Okay, who's going to be the second?
I think I was a millisecond sooner than you.
They can arm wrestle over it. All right, and a second appointment is I'd like to appoint Brian Kling, the Inspector of Animals, effective August 1st, 2019 until April 30th, 2020. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
One favor, would you tell Kathy how appreciative we are that she sent such a quality fellow?
I'll try to lie to her, you're for sure, thanks.
Looking forward to working with you.
All right, I am too, thanks.
Congratulations.
You don't need me for anything else.
No, do you want to get, well, should he wait until August to be sworn in?
I would wait until August 1st.
Okay, all right.
Do the paperwork later.
Perfect. Well, we've got the paperwork done. It'll be with the Town Clerk's Office, so if you just want to come in and be sworn in before August 1st, that'll work.
All right.
And then there may be HR stuff the first day or at some point?
Some paperwork?
Yeah, we can take care of that with the Treasurer's Office. That's quick.
Perfect, great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You all set? Any questions to call?
All right, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, warrants paid.
The list of the warrants.
All right, we have one warrant for $8,336.22 for Lynch &amp; Marini. That was $7,000. That was for year-end, June 30th, 2019. There are auditors, aren't there, Lynch &amp; Marini?
Yes.
Then Plymouth Rubbish, a couple of bills, $135, and a second for $120, and these are for concurrent months. Then we've got a couple of Verizon bills. First one is $979.93, and the second is $1.29. Probably cost them more to mail it. So that's the report of the warrants paid. So we're, our next item is the Zoning Enforcement Officer for an update.
And Liz went to check on his whereabouts.
Pardon me?
Do you want to pass me down the warrant, what you did?
Sure, absolutely.
Got it totally.
Thank you.
You want to skip and do the next one or?
I don't know, I think that one's going to be a little bit lengthy.
Yeah, make it lengthy, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have any update or appointments we can make while we're waiting?
We have a whole bunch of them. Like a whole list.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
All right, why don't we?
I don't know how Liz wanted to do it because we have some, like Barbara, but she wanted me to do appointments. It must have been something you discussed.
Okay.
For those of them, if you want to have, if Jane made them.
All right, so.
Oh, just listening.
Okay.
She wanted the.
Mr. Frazier's on his whiteout.
Perfect. All right, so why don't we just wait then? We were going to jump into the appointments slips.
Did you want to do some of those while he's on the white?
Do you want to? All right, so this whole group, we can do?
Yes. So some of them have different dates. It's just to round out the Town Clerk's Office records. They discovered that for some of the contract people, like the Town Accountant, the Treasurer, that they had always done hard in the past. So we just thought it was easier for them to keep it consistent.
Perfect, okay.
So this is reaffirming.
Perfect. All right, I'll make a motion, we appoint Barbara Gomez, Town Accountant, until December 31st, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, okay, let's hold. All right. Well, good evening, sir.
Mind joining us at the table up here?
Sir? Who came in? Certainly, good evening.
Well, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
So we are hoping that you could give us kind of a 10,000-feet update as to different items that you're working on?
Sure, be happy to. So in the last year, since I started, we've had 58 applications for zoning permits. We've issued 49, we've approved 49, we've denied nine. We've sent out two emails on public signs, signs that people post on the streets. We removed them, sent them emails, and so far, we haven't had any problems with that reoccurring along the side of the road. We've had several inquiries from people prior to purchasing a piece of property, if they could use it for commercial use in various shapes and forms and ways. So we've responded to all of that, and we've responded in writing so that they have something to go by and explain to them what the zoning bylaws allow and what they don't allow. I wrote up a general explanation or discussion, whatever it might be called, of in-law apartments, based on the fact that we've received, and a number of offices in here have received a number of complaints about realtors advertising in-law apartments. And it may or may not surprise you that the town of Plymouth does not allow in-law apartments. I can't speak for past history, but there is nothing in the bylaw that allows an in-law apartment. The distinction in the way those come about historically is we have extended families, and we always have had in this country for 100 years. That's fine, and in fact, that is allowed provided that you don't lock off areas of the dwelling. So I can have two kitchens, I can have a dozen bathrooms, I can have 15 bedrooms, as long as everyone who lives there has access to all of them. And that was decided in a Mass Superior Court, Superior, I'm not sure if it went to the Mass Supreme Court, but a Mass Superior Court case on a gentleman by the name of Ernie Bach, the car dealer. And the Town Fathers and the Building Inspector and all, he said, "You can't, you can't do that. You can't have a kitchen on each floor." And he said, "Yeah, I can." So then they went to court, and he explained to the judge, he said, "Look, I'm up on the third floor, I'm looking out at the ocean in the morning. I want to have a cup of coffee, and I'm not going downstairs to get it." And that's what the judge came back with and said that there is no law as to how many kitchens or how many bathrooms or any other rooms, as long as everyone that lives there has access to the entire dwelling. And when you think about it, it makes perfect sense. It's self-policing because I'm sure as heck not going to allow somebody in my house to wander around my house and my office and my kids and all of that. So I did, I did a write-up on that, and the Town Clerk has that, and we've sent it out to a number of realtors who've been advertising in-law apartments. In terms of.
Before you leave that, you know.
Sure.
So if I have an in-law apartment, and as long as I've got a door that allows everybody access to both sides, I'm okay.
Yep.
That's all I need, is a door.
Yeah, it's like your bedroom. You know, you can have doors in the house. You just can't lock it so that it separates into two different units. There are a number of units in town where they have put a dwelling section over a garage that's separated from the main house by a breezeway. Can't do that. You got to have access through the entire place. You can't lock it off.
Why is that blocked off if you can get through the breezeway to the garage?
Well, it's locked off. That's what they were doing, was locking it so that it became a separate unit.
When you say locking, locking the doors or actually putting up a physical wall?
Locking the doors, which become a physical wall.
How would you know though? I mean, if somebody came forward and said, "I'm not going to lock the doors," and they got egress.
Well, when they build it, you're going to inspect it, and there shouldn't be one in there. And if the realtor is savvy, they will look at it and go, "You can't have that locked there. You can't, you can't do that," which is why we were targeting the realtors that were advertising in-law apartments and said, "Look, this is what an in-law apartment is. It's a separate, separated unit. If you're going to have a large extended family, that's okay, as long as everybody has access to everything in the house."
We probably need a separate discussion on the bylaw, whether it makes sense, because we, 30% of our town residents are over 55, and given that many of them want to move into a smaller place, you know, the houses are too big, the kids gone, it just seems like we should at least explore whether it makes sense, you know, where, somebody may say, "Well, we, I know there's places in town where, let's say, two families, mostly women, have got together," you know, and I think it's almost separate dwellings, but I don't know that for sure. But at least we ought to talk through whether there's a need for this.
Yeah, maybe you talk to Alan Weelock, Bylaw Review.
And Council on Aging too, I think. I think we should get their input.
Mm-hmm. There are communities in Massachusetts that allow in-law apartments.
Yeah, I don't know if it's good or bad.
And they regulate it, and one of the downsides to it is that when it's no longer in-laws, particularly when they're elderly, when I pass away and my kids are like, "What am I going to do with this? We don't need that," so they rent it.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it becomes a problem.
I can see what is attached to it.
So the only benefit we get, if I'm understanding what you're saying, in creating a bylaw that allows in-law apartments, is then a lockable door petition would be permitted where it isn't permitted now.
Right, right.
Yeah, right now, we have duplexes and condos. I'm thinking of a house, looks like a house, but it's actually two condos. I'm not sure where the line is drawn, you know, and how you look at that and say, "Okay," let's say it was two condos in one building, and they put a door in because it's extended family.
Well, that's a condo. It's specifically set up to be two dwelling units, separate, two separate dwelling units.
And maybe that's fine. Maybe that's all we need.
Well, and to keep in mind that none of these in-laws would count towards our housing, affordable housing. But if it's, if there's a need, and maybe just even a clarification would be an improvement.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have sent out a number of violation letters. Some are formal, some have been sent out a cease and desist. That would include Tractor Supply, and we're getting some reaction from that. We have received, I think most of the departments here have received a zoning verification request, request for zoning verification letter from a company that is, I'm not sure who they're working for, whether they're working for a buyer or for the seller, but I don't, that facility is now owned by a company in New Jersey. It has been for, I don't know, some number of years. Tractor Supply itself is a tenant, and they only have control of the inside of the building and some of the, where they place articles for sale on the property. They don't have control, for example, of the grading. They don't have control of the lighting, which is an issue with the abutters behind. That's corporate. So I've been dealing back and forth with corporate, and they've got their trees back, and they're going to fix the shades on the lighting so that they extend down further so it doesn't go out and back. And we're getting there, and I suspect the fact that they're going to sell it will help, help us enforce it because anybody's.
Who's going to sell the?
The company in New Jersey that owns it now.
But Tractor Supply will still be a tenant under this?
As far as I know. I mean, nothing is, nothing's guaranteed because I'm not proving all the paperwork. But I presume Tractor Supply will still be there. I don't know why they wouldn't. It's a real, it's a commercial real estate deal. They just want the property and get the income from it. And Tractor Supply was very accommodating. I explained a bunch of things to them. They said, "Well, you know, it makes perfect sense." The one thing they haven't done is to move, they've got a bunch of trailers, open trailers for equipment, and they're in the wrong place. They're not, they're not supposed to be there, but we'll get over that. But they're working on it, and I expect some resolution relatively quickly. So that's, that's that one. Then up the street a little bit, Wunnetuxa River Provide has popped up some signs on the fences. No permits, and they wouldn't be allowed anyway. We'd have to figure out some way to do it. So I stopped in and talked to the owner, very nice lady, and she's like, "We've been doing this for years. Nobody's ever said anything." Sorry. And I asked her if she would come in. She said she'd stop in one Monday evening and discuss what she can or cannot do. I have no idea what she plans to do, but a week ago, there was a sandwich board sign out there that said, "Business for sale." I don't know. It's not there now. Hope she wouldn't, just for the sake of the signs, wouldn't, wouldn't sell the business. Then we have 89 Palmer Road. We sent out a cease and desist letter. Gentleman was selling cars on the property. Now, it's business-owned, and he could do that, but he doesn't have a license. And he immediately said, "Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get involved with that. I don't want to get a license," and he got rid of the cars for sale. 82 Center Street, a gentleman by the name of Michael Banner has a million Volkswagens on the property. Actually, it's a millionless eight. I've talked to the, I shouldn't drag the administrator into this, but my, my position on this is that I don't want the gentleman, given his history and what's happened to him and the property, et cetera, I don't want him spending money in court to defend this thing. We've had a number of talks. He has promised to work on moving these vehicles, and he's doing so. Every week or two weeks, he brings in slips of stuff that he's sent to the, to the scales. I've got copies of them downstairs, and he says, "You know, I'm just afraid you're going to come down." And I said, "Mr. Banner, as long as you keep up your end of the bargain. You said you're going to keep moving these things out?" I suggested to him that he talked to a high school student, if he knows any of them, and have them take photographs of these vehicles and put them on a website. Volkswagens are a very hot item, and he's just, for whatever reason, hasn't been hitting the market. So he's going to do that, and this weekend, it's got nothing to do with my job, but I took one of his business cards, and I go through Winchendon up to my summer place, and there's a place that has Volkswagens. And I went in, talked to them, and dropped it there, and I said, "Look, this guy's got a gazillion of them on the property. You might want to go down and look at them or talk to them, you know, see if you can help him move them." So he is, he's working on it, and.
He's not adding to that one.
No, 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 not at all. No, no, he's moving stuff off. And I watch it, I compare photographs, and I have faith that the gentleman is, is a man of his word. He's, he's doing what he's supposed to do. That's really the intent of all of this, and you know, if you can't do it overnight, that's fine, and they didn't get there overnight either.
True.
Let's see, then there is Palmer Road, just up from that corner, was a gentleman by the name of Kevin Farrell, who has a vacant lot up there, and he had a ton of equipment. And he's done a good job of removing it, with the exception of a big crane and a big backhoe. And I've talked to him a couple of times. I'm going to move it, I'm going to move it, I'm going to move it. He hasn't moved it. So I'm in the process of, we've sent him the cease and desist letters. I'm in the process of working with Sergeant Terry to get down to the court to get introduced to the clerk magistrate, and I will file a, for a show cause hearing, for a criminal complaint, and see if that moves him a little bit more.
What address was that on the Palmer Road with the crane?
Zero.
That's a question someone's got.
Wait a second, I can give you the section block and line, if that helps.
And I'm sorry, what was his, then I'm going to use his name?
It's parcel 11510.
Thank you.
My pleasure. He doesn't live in town. I would like to see him show a little more respect for the town and town bylaws. Let's see, and that's pretty much it. We have, there are a few people that I know are not happy with the way I'm ruling on certain things, but I do my best to explain to them. These aren't my rulings. This is town bylaws. This was written and voted on by the town. If you don't like what it says, let's go in and change it. In fact, there was, there was one, is it Mr. Satchak?
Mm-hmm.
Was very upset that I wouldn't approve building, a building to support his corn maze. He said, "That's a, that's a commercial venture. That's not a farming venture." And there are a number of court cases that I can show you that say that there aren't. However, I would suggest that you go to whomever in the town, whether it's the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and here's what you need to put in. Put in a definition of corn maze and put in the areas in town, what zones in town you want to allow it. Get it voted on, and you're done. And I believe he's done that. I think that was in the, you know, it's, it's.
It's done, so we're.
It went through at town meeting.
Okay, so he's.
It was part of the changes to the use table.
Okay. My, my job is not to be an obstructionist. My job, and I think I told you when I first came on board, is to educate people, to understand what the bylaws say. And I've been working with Alan Weelock and his, his committee to clean stuff up. If we can make all of these bylaws clear so that there is no loose interpretation, there's no, "Well, I think it means this or I think it means that." If we can get those things cleaned up, we will clean up in time, most of the zoning violations, because it'll be clear.
We do feel like we need to be, in some cases, ahead of, so we don't get involved after it's a violation.
Yeah.
And I guess to that extent, you know, especially, the thing that attracts people to this town is the rural character of it, the agricultural side, and to the extent we can, we'd like to keep that, of course. I think Mr. Satchak, in his case, has been very good for the town. And to the extent we can work with him, like you're saying, I think that makes perfect sense. As well as we've got a lot of horse farms, you know, if there's issues that may arise there in the future that we can almost look out and see, we ought to sit down and start talking to people about where do we need some changes if that's what's needed.
If and when I see those, those issues, I put them in writing and get. If and when I see those, those issues, I put them in writing and get them to Mr. Wheelock and he can look at them and the committee can look at them-
Okay, good.
And make recommendations. It's not my job to set policy. I will, if they wish help and advice from, from my experience, not necessarily gonna help them, but I will give them the benefit of my experience and my advice as to how you can correct this, how you can solve this. We have some internal issues, I say internal, within town government, that we need to, to clean up because they do cause problems down the road with timing of certain events happening and-
Well, you should be talking to Liz to make sure that we're on board on that.
Yeah, I do.
The first time she's heard it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I do.
Okay.
Well, I'm so appreciative to have you on board and helping us.
Oh, thank you.
I think that-
It's a very enjoyable community to work with and to work for and great people. It's, it's, it really is a pleasure.
And, you know, you're working with our residents to help them, with Mr. Banner, that's a great example and I think that's, that's a wonderful thing, is to help, help them to become compliant.
Right.
And it may not happen overnight, but exactly.
That's the whole purpose.
If we can work together, that's definitely a win.
And as Mr. Traynor says, if you can catch them before they walk in the pothole, so much the better.
Yeah.
And we're, we're starting to do more of that with people coming in and, and asking how to, a gentleman in 10 minutes ago, said, "Do I need a permit to build a chicken coop?" "How big is it?" "It's four by five." Answer is no. Minimum for permits, 120 square feet. Done. But people are, I think are feeling more comfortable in coming into the building department. You've got a bunch of great people down there and they ask and, you know, if somebody comes in during the week, Kathy is great about shooting me an email or a text or something and saying, "What about this, what about this? How do I, how do I direct them, where do I go with that?" And I can respond immediately and it's, you know, it works well.
Great. Mark?
I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in, I really appreciate the thorough update.
My pleasure.
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, enjoy the rest of your summer.
You too.
I'm trying, if we turn on the heat.
I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Maybe for this week, anyway. A little reprieve.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Christine, I don't know if you wanna pull your mics to you more because we turn-
Pull my mic to me more?
Yeah, just because we turn the AC.
Okay, sure. Okay, so our next item is the townhouse building and drainage issues. Do you wanna?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think what we have to look at now is, it's gonna kind of blossom into this campus thing we've been talking about. We went down, last storm, the basement was just water flowing in. We walked around with, we came in later with the custodian, he was bailing down there, we had the fire chief come over and we walked around and looked at the ceilings, we, we had the town clerk in at the last meeting saying, you know, "There's a leak there." There are spots where it's leaking in many places. So we've got a roof problem, we've got a water problem in the basement, we've got an old electrical setup in the old police station portion, we've had problems with the electrical and the fire alarm, and then we had a problem with the septic. So it seems to me that what we need to do is rather than piecemeal this now, but we say, "Let's do a thorough investigation of how we're gonna phase this over, let's say, the next five, 10 years and start fixing this so we got a building that's, that's habitable." Because right now, you know, we're bringing everybody up from the bottom. I think the only way we're gonna fix the water situation is to really take, have an engineer come in and go through the building, go through the outside. We're trying to find old plans for the drains to see, we've got a second pump down here that pumps, but we don't know where it goes. Works away, nobody can find the outlet. I don't know.
I have a plan for you, John. They brought up, yes.
I'll see you.
Thanks.
So I think, under our direction, I would like to see a couple of things happen. One, I'd like to see us appoint the campus committee, formally put it together. We talked about having the public safety committee transfer over, I think that makes a lot of sense. Mark wants to be on it, I wanna be on it, I think that's probably the maximum. Then we make a decision, you know, we go up to the people who are on it and say, "Do you wanna be part of this as we go forward?" I've got a feeling, just from chatting with a few, that they're all for. And then I think we, once we've got that committee, we put this under that and we say, "Okay, now we wanna take a look at the building and how we go forward." And if there was unlimited money, it'd be no problem, but it isn't, so we're gonna have to figure out grants, we're gonna have to figure out CPC, we're gonna have to figure out staging it so that we can afford it and not break the tax rate.
And prioritize the projects.
Yep. And there's a lot of other things that we're talking about too, so it's, I think we need to raise it up so it's very high on our visibility. So that's where I'm going.
Okay. What do you think, Mark?
Yeah, I think that makes total sense. It fits in with the master planning and the bigger level and it's one piece of it. I don't know how far we're gonna get until we vote the money for engineering and consultant studies and it's gonna be slow and it's gonna be frustrating to be slow. But absolutely, if we're aiming toward next year's town meeting to have engineering and other architectural stuff, then it'll be another year before we get going on.
Right.
So, but unless we get going, so-
Gotta start, right.
I'm anxious to move forward.
All right, so do we want to reach out to the public safety committee and see if they're interested in serving on this committee and then make the appointments at our next meeting?
I would love to do that.
Okay.
You okay with that, Mark?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I think we'd get into a logistics issue if we're both on and, let me think about that. Maybe I would forego, I've been on that committee or sitting in for seven years now, maybe I'd make my seat available to you.
Well, think about it, I mean, other than that, it's just a posting issue.
Well, in minutes, you'd have to keep minutes to-
But they do anyways, don't they?
They do, but if the Board of Selectmen, there'd be a Board of Selectmen, let me work on that a little bit.
Yeah, it would be ideal if it was just one of you on that committee, but yeah, we can definitely sort that out. Okay, so do you wanna reach out to the public safety committee and see if they're interested or do you want Liz to do it?
I think, Liz, if you just send out a memo saying, "This is the thinking and are you interested in being a part of this and we're gonna-"
Make the appointments.
I did broach it at the, either the last meeting or the one before and there was interest. I'm not quite sure, well, there, there was definitely interest in staying involved. We'll leave it like that and we'll see what happens when you reach out.
Perfect. Okay, very good. Okay, so our last item is the updates, or not the updates.
Can we go back to that one since that is the townhouse building?
Yeah.
Just as an update, I guess, the land use people are moving upstairs?
On or about August 1st.
So that's next week.
Coming quickly, yeah.
And they're comfortable with whatever the arrangements?
They're thrilled.
I guess if they leave them down there in the damp, then upstairs looks nice.
Well, Steve's done a great job, Steve Sarrow has done a great job, it looks nice down there.
Yeah, I'd like to go in and take a peek, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have to go in after they're up and, up and running. Yeah, very good.
Let me ask, who's gonna, is it just gonna be building, Liz? Is it gonna be everybody planning?
It's the building and land use offices.
Okay.
All right, perfect.
This room, we're gonna be up planning and conservation, huh?
They're the land use people, yeah.
Okay, okay. So it's everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so back to appointments. So we appointed Mrs. Gomez to, as the town accountant. So next we've got Colleen Moran as the town treasurer until 12/31/2022. Do you want to just do these in bulk?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, make a motion that we appoint Colleen Moran also as the town tax collector until 12/31/2022. Michelle Lanes, Lahane?
Lanes.
Lanes, Michelle Lanes, council on aging secretary until 6/30/2022. Is that a new position? Have we had a secretary before?
Yes, there.
Okay.
The town treasurer, everything.
All right. Dorothy Martel, council on aging treasurer until 6/30/2022. Mary Lou White, council on aging board member until 6/30/2022. Jaclyn Freitas, council on aging, alternate outreach and driver until 6/30/2022. Amy Hempel, recreation commission board member until 6/30/2022. I'm so happy to see these. Kevin Kopp, recreation commission board member until 6/30/2022. Jaclyn Freitas, Harry Jason Park Study and Development until 6/30/2022.
Wow, that one's back in operation?
I did it. That one's, well, no, it's a one-
Hasn't been anything but we talked to him.
But she's, I think it's a one-man crew.
Okay, even-
At this point.
Even so.
Okay. Jennifer McDonald, historic district commission until 6/30/2022. Jonathan Shaw, historic district commission chair until 6/30/2022. And anything off here or is that just in there?
I have not, I didn't mean to give you that one. The cultural council needs to get ahold of us.
Okay.
So I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, so we just need to sign these and then go to Liz's update.
Okay. So the conservation agent posting period has ended and I'm working with Linda Leddy to get the conservation commission kind of set up to conduct their interviews and work through that process.
How many applicants did you have?
There were five applicants.
Terrific.
Yes.
So how many openings?
One, it's just the conservation agent.
Oh, okay.
That position.
Okay.
Our housing choice grant application was sent in, in time for the deadline and just to remind you, that was the one that we were seeking funds to put together, a master plan that would also take housing into consideration. The two Brooks Preserve, those two lots are back out to bid, so they are available. The deadline for bids is August 19th at noon. And I believe we should be hearing back soon from a broker with a revised listing agreement so that those will appear in MLS and some additional places. So we sent another email today to that person to see if she could get the agreement finalized for each law over to us so that we can sign. Actually, while I'm on that, it might make sense just to acknowledge, I think our plan, given time constraints and we weren't sure if this board, like if we were gonna have an opportunity to sign the agreements beforehand, our thought process was that Mark, as both a selectman and a member of the open space committee, would be able to sign that on our behalf, because it's the open space committee, from what Linda said, will temporarily be paying for that service.
I'm not a member of open space, albeit I've attended the meetings for years, so-
Oh, okay. That was what we had kind of thought. Are you not comfortable signing them or are you okay?
No, uncomfortable signing.
All right, is everybody?
That sounds good.
I just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The library doors project, I've reached out to the selected contractor three times now and I have not heard back. So we may have to go back to the drawing board to our other responses and pick another person. I just wanted to give him a little extra time in case he was maybe away on vacation or something like that, but I don't know, it was, I was just a little surprised.
Yeah.
I know I have the contact information correct because we had been-
So is this by phone or email or how?
Both. So I'm just trying to establish contact. I had sent him something saying, you know, "You've got the job, please let us know when you're starting." And we haven't, and then I sent something else.
Hmm. Do we have a street address for him?
I have it in the office. I'm not sure what town he's out of.
Do we know where he's from?
I think he is out of Bridgewater, now that you say that. I believe it's in Bridgewater. Board of Health was asking if we could send out a memo that basically just lets everybody in the building know that if they need to close us down for a health-related emergency, that they would like everybody to please respond appropriately and promptly. This is the second time now that a member of the Board of Health has had an issue with somebody in this building refusing to accept the directive and leave in a timely manner. So they're not looking to single anybody out, but they would just like kind of a blanket memo to be sent out that just says, you know, if we're, if we have to close the building, it's being done for a reason and if it's something that Board of Health has declared is a potential hazard to the people of the building, that even though everybody has important work to do, that we please take it seriously and respond accordingly.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure what-
I mean, is that really necessary? I mean, they have the authority.
Unfortunately, it is.
Okay.
A member of the Board of Health had to spend quite a bit of time here on Thursday and then I ended up having to talk to the individual and say, you know, "We need to move it along."
Okay.
So I think that that might go a long way, just to put it out there.
All right, well, that's unfortunate because they certainly have the authority and there's no question about that.
I know, I don't think there was any harm meant by, I think somebody just wanted to finish something, but it was just, you know.
Well, it was, it was a pretty toxic situation.
It was, so.
Okay.
You know, people just need to understand that it's not something that we use to close on whim.
It's never arbitrary, right.
Right. So that's that.
Okay.
And then, we've mentioned it a little bit in passing, but we're potentially working on the Mass Works grant application. It's due in early August and an engineer had come out here and had met John Traynor and Scott Ripley, had walked him around the town center campus area and then also discussed at length the intersection of Main Street and Ring Road. So we have to get started basically on the application itself and kind of coming up with a concept plan. Now, everybody understood that this was done a long time ago and people were, did not view the concept plan at that time very favorably. They felt like people were losing too much yard space, it varied too much with the current layout of the road. So up on the screen is what I received today, which is just, it's a draft, nothing's finalized. But that was a draft of what we'd need.
The UMEGO?
Karen, I can try to zoom in a little bit, oops.
So the big feedback we had last time was that we had too many. So this is the existing road right here, you can see the crane. And what they're talking about is moving that back, it's town land, which would free up this, they actually did this house more, more land, putting a island, much like Upland Road, say, only maybe a little longer back. And then bringing the traffic in, you'd only have the road as it is now in that there wouldn't be another lane added. So we need to get feedback, again, from the residents, whether this is more acceptable than what was up there and any feedback we have.
So are there stops on Main Street at that intersection or is it through for Main?
It's through for Main and you turn right onto Ring Road, there would be an island. The traffic coming from 106 down Main to go onto Ring Road would have to go around the, you'd have to take a left after the island. Right now, you take a left before the little island and that's where we have probably the biggest safety issue. The issue that's probably gonna come up is that, does this make it more of a speed zone than it is now? Because that was some of the pushback we got last time by kind of softening the curve here. We do, the town does own the land. In fact, talking to some older residents, the, the actual road is quite a ways back behind the house that was built. How it ever moved over, we're not sure, but that's fun to-
What would it take to make it a stop on Main? So that it would be a three- So that it would be a three-way stop?
Yeah, I don't know if they'd allow you, but we could look into it.
We could ask that question. We could also, what I found just in my prior experience is that Mastot typically looks favorable on, looks favorably on projects that we can demonstrate that you've examined a variety of alternatives. So that would be a potential alternative that we could include. It would help bring it up to DOT standards as far as safety is concerned. And the goal would obviously be to have a minimal impact on any residents, while creating a safe pass-through for vehicles. So it's kind of trying to please everybody and just get it up to, up to code, basically, as far as site distances and, and safety is concerned. That's really what it is.
The, obviously, the person who built the new house there, right at that intersection, would not be happy because we'd be moving the road towards the house.
How much frontage do they have?
I don't know.
Are they set back?
They're set back, but they're quite a ways.
It's just such a sharp corner. It's blind.
I still like my rotary idea of a small rotary and possibly making it back to that line, which I think is what the town owns, and maybe putting a small rotary in there so it's not a straight shot. You have to kind of loop around if you're going to go straight on Main Street. But I don't know how feasible that is.
We can go back to the engineer and ask him.
We can go back to them and ask. There's no problem with us asking questions. We're just, we're basically just getting some assistance with putting together a grant application.
Okay.
So we're not under contract with anybody. We're just more or less getting some assistance so we could go back and ask, would a small roundabout be feasible?
Very small.
Would stops in the other directions be feasible? Another question would be, that they were actually asking, and I said I'd bring it to the board, do you want them to include, if we put together the grant application for redoing the sidewalks and doing sidewalks in some spaces where they're deficient or non-existent in that area?
There's no sidewalks now.
Right. So wherever that is, do you want to add them in?
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Or if they're not there now, it would affect, obviously, the width of the road, and you are talking more impact to people.
Right.
So maybe it's best to leave it out, if they're not currently there. Any sidewalks that you do add in will need to be up to DOT standards, which is pretty wide.
Right.
So I don't know if maybe we're better off just leaving that out and just sticking to the roadway.
I don't know where they go. I mean, the only sidewalk that might make sense would be go down Ring Road to the school, but you don't want kids driving.
No, I don't think kids are going to be walking to school.
You don't want to give a false sense of safety either.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Maybe we're better off saying that where there are no sidewalks, leave it out of the proposed plans. None of this, though, is etched in stone. This is simply the supporting materials that would be necessary for a grant application. If we were successful with the grant, then we would have to meet with DOT. There would be numerous public input sessions, public meetings. DOT would have to be, Mastot would have to be, you know, a major player in this and very much involved. So, you know, it's not like this is happening. It's probably even a little premature to have it up on the screen, but before we put all this time into a grant application, I don't, I don't want to be proceeding or waste anybody else's time if it's like, no, we're not interested, don't pursue it. But I was asked to look at that intersection, and I know it's been mentioned to Scott Ripley a few times to please look at it.
We've got a figure.
Scott did, Scott met with the engineer and with John, they walked all around, and then they talked for a while about these plans. So it's basically, it's Scott and I trying to make good on what we were asked to.
So if you could go back with the rotary idea and the stop idea to see if we can, if that's kosher, if it is.
Let's give it a whirl.
And maybe we have a variety of alternatives to present to the public and say, what do you think? If we're successful with the grant, we might not get the grant, and then it's kind of
The grant is for engineering planning.
And construction.
And construction.
Because we're a small community of under 7,000, we're eligible to apply for and receive design services and construction oversight money as part of the package for our grant application.
And how much does it weigh?
They usually give up to a million dollars. You used to be limited in, I think you had to take an off year between project applications. And now for the small communities of under 7,000, you can even apply every year. But they won't award more if you already have an open Mass Works.
Right.
And obviously, this is a pretty big project, so it would probably take us a year plus to, to do it, if we were successful. I mean, it's all a big if, but I just wanted to bring this back to.
I like it.
When do we hear about the grant?
I'm not sure when you hear. The deadline, I guess, is August 9th. Don't quote me on that date. It's sometime in early August, like within the first two weeks of August.
Thanks, Liz. That's wonderful. I think we can all agree that we did not like the plan before, and the residents didn't like the plan either.
Liz, would it, would it take up more room?
It would take up a little more room. It would. There'd be no doubt, but there would not be a straight shot on Main Street.
It definitely slowed things down.
It would be a little bit different configuration. But if it's only one lane, it wouldn't necessarily be bumped out too far, and it would only be really bumped out in the center of that T. So it's not taking up a whole lot of space, but it would eliminate a straight through. But yeah, thank you so much. That's great that we're, we're addressing this and, and looking at options. That would be really helpful.
I'll look at my notes. That's all I have for my updates. And for correspondence, we had the Clinton Halifax Express, and they put on a really great puppet show in Halifax that was well-attended by everybody from the area, and there were more tales of old Clinton.
I noticed in the ad, they had a typo on our address. Are they going to fix that?
They, in the box ad, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we've already.
Great, thank you. Perfect.
They're missing the S.
Very good. All right. Did Finn come? Would you like to talk to us? Did you want to meet with us?
Not really.
Okay. All right. You're just here to stay cool?
Yeah, no, we, we received a letter from John, I believe, about the water difficulties a couple of weeks ago, and it was proposed, and maybe we, we put our heads together, and so we just thought that maybe we could do that.
Okay.
We've talked a little about that tonight. You know, this past week, we had the big rainfall, which flooded downstairs. At the same time, the roof leaks. We've walked around with the custodian, there's, you know, you see all the spots up in the ceilings.
Yeah, it's getting worse up there.
Oh, yeah.
The town clerk has been complaining about roof leaks there and possibility of even affecting the bulb, though I don't see that happening, but we need an engineer to tell us. We've got, down in the old police station space, we've got the electrical box that's still got the fuses from, I don't know, what's that, 40s, 30s? You know Mike Bednar. And we had a problem with the septic, we had to close the building. And this is the second time we've done that in the last couple of months?
Yeah, just in the last couple of months. It's been numerous times over the last year and a half.
So we, we talked a little tonight about, what we really need to do is that to put together a phased approach, to taking a look at the whole thing, get engineering in, some professionals to tell us exactly how we can fix this, and then what it's going to cost, obviously. And talk about how we're gonna, you know, maybe a five, 10-year plan, whatever, to start saying, okay, we methodically want to go after this. We just kind of continue to Band-Aid. We're throwing money at it, and nothing really gets fixed. So that's sort of the headset. The second part of that was, we've talked about having, right now, we have the Public Safety Committee, and we were going to see if that could kind of transfer over into a, what we're calling a Campus Committee, and have that as the working group to start looking at this. And this would, the townhouse would obviously be part of that. So that's our thinking, and just wanted to give you a heads-up that that's the approach we were sort of going to take, in that we'd love to have, you know, the Finance Committee involved all the way, because obviously, it's going to be big bucks.
Right. I think, in general, we agree with that approach. We're certainly not in favor of.
Not the big bucks part?
Throw money after.
Yeah. I think one thing that would help us too, though, is we are still thinking about a grant writer, and targeting what we want to approach first, because we've got all sorts of things. You know, we've got a man that we're trying to do a grant for, and it just makes sense to say, okay, if this is as important as we think it is, then here's how we want to go after these grants.
Thanks for the update. Do you need anything from us?
No, it's all pretty, you know, loose right now.
I think right now, just more or less making sure we're all on the same page, so that no one's surprised and.
As we do it, we probably should, we'll be writing up some of this. We'll just share you, copy you, so that you know what we're looking at and where we're going. If you see any roadblocks, let us know.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so on to Board's Goals. So we already touched on the master plan, senior citizens' needs, shared services. Thank you very much for coming in.
Aye.
Yeah, sure.
Went to Council on Aging today. So I do this, turning about once every two months. And I just wanted you to know what I was talking about. So I, I mentioned the townhouse issues, the same thing I just said here. Mentioned that the downstairs people are coming up to the.
Honestly, we didn't, we didn't say anything.
The second floor, short term, we don't know what short term is. Is that three months, a year?
Right.
That we're talking about, talking to the grant writer, we do. I'm going to be out in the Berkshires this week, and I'm going to try to see if I can chat with her, make sure where she's coming from. The Old Town House, that was still in the license negotiations. The handicap excess, I was telling them it was awarded, but I guess that may be back to square ones. We got a new genealogy club at the library. A lot of people hopefully attending that. Volunteerism, again, suggested, you know, we don't want to get as many people involved, and I can pick that up when I talk to a volunteer, because I do go to PACE.
Great.
So that's.
Okay. All right, so shared services, I think we're talking.
Just talked about a meeting in late July with myself, the Carver Town Manager, and possibly Halifax.
Great.
If he wants to attend, so.
We did chat with Tom Millius, and he sounded like he would be very much in favor of talking through.
And there are other town fathers from Halifax that I know are interested.
Yeah.
Maybe Charlie just hasn't gotten on board yet, but there's real interest there.
Great. All right, we already talked about grant acquisition. We're continuing to professionalize the town general and financial operations. We're, we're using town-owned buildings right now, we're repurposing them.
Yes.
All right, we continue to support Liz's goals. We talked about Two Brokes Preserve and continuing the fiscally sound government.
Can I go back to Liz's?
Sure.
We never finished that, did we?
We, like, sort of finished it, but not fully. Should I send around what my thought was the final version?
I think we had a version that we, you and I, that included technology and one other thing.
I thought we had to, yeah, did we take the boards, and then I did something, and then John and I said we would add technology?
It would be good to consolidate that.
I just think it would be good. It'd be helpful for me, just so come year end.
Let's be clear.
And be helpful for, helpful between now and year end, and helpful for us at year end.
Perfect. All right, so you'll get that to us?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, any other business?
Got a few.
Okay, are they rants and raves, or are they, are they business?
Minutes.
We don't have any minutes for tonight.
When are we going to do executive minutes?
Um.
In, in executive session?
Yeah, we'll have to remember those for our next executive session.
Well, we have John's minutes from last year.
We do have John's minutes.
It sounded like there was a lot of corrections, or?
No.
No, I didn't see anything.
My pen ran out of ink. I was so.
All right, so that is, what date, 7/8?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, did you have any?
I make a motion that be approved as written.
All right, I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Perfect, so we can knock one off.
Can I say, well done?
Yeah, they were nicely done. Nicely done. All right, so down to two.
Did I say executive session? No, we, we still got minutes from executive session.
Yeah, 6:30, 6:17.
Plus the.
There's an ES in there.
Executive session.
The open ones we have to get.
Mm-hmm. Right.
It's the last two executive sessions, I think.
And then open in June?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so did you have, are yours all rants and raves? Okay. All right, so I think we've got no further business, so. Do you want to start?
Sure. I do have one question. We have four cemeteries.
We have what?
Four cemeteries.
Hillcrest, the church, in North Plumton. Does anybody know where the Smallpox Cemetery is? I know it's in the Bonny Pond area. Did I ask this?
You did.
Oh, okay. Because I asked it of the senior citizens, and they didn't know either. I want to get a sign put up, but first I got to find out where it is.
I would think that the town clerk would have those records, because there'd be burial records, wouldn't there?
Yeah, there's no graves.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure it locates it.
Okay.
Upwards, yes, there are burial records. It's like a mass grave, you know, people there. Okay, so I'll do my rave.
There's a cemetery in Bonny's Pond?
There was a Smallpox Cemetery somewhere in that area.
Wow.
I just wanted to put them in the ground, because everybody was afraid of the disease, and. I want to pay. And I'd just like to give a shout-out to PACE, the Plymouth Athletic Youth, because they've got a really active group. They have eight to 10 people there. Talk a little bit about volunteerism, as, using them as a template. They're making things happen. They got a movie going on this Saturday, if you want to see Legos. I think it's Legos 2.
Oh, I didn't see Legos 1, so I, you can't see it out of order.
So shout-out to PACE.
Awesome. And there's a couple of new volunteers for the Recreation Commission.
Well, actually, they just signed, resigned up.
Okay.
Amy Hempel is the chair, and I forget the gentleman's name.
Perfect. So if we can get one more person.
No, I think, I think we're four.
Are there five now?
Yeah, I think we're four.
Oh, terrific, right, that's great news. Okay, perfect.
Very good.
Good.
She's been communicating a lot.
She's very good.
Excellent.
She's very good. She's a volunteer.
So they've used the townhouse, too.
Okay.
If the school wasn't, and the library, and they had a lot of people.
Great, terrific. Terrific. All right. Do you have your rants and raves or was that it?
That was my rave.
That was your rave? Do you have anything?
My rant and rave, my rave is rants and raves. I think John instituted it.
You did.
I, maybe once a month or so, I'm interviewed by WATD for what our agenda is for the evening. And he mentioned, he, the leader of the discussion earlier this morning was, mentioned that it was something unique to Plumbton that got me chuckling on the radio at 6:30 in the morning. And, and the fact that there's another unique thing in Plumbton is a good thing and I'm appreciative of that.
My rave, I've actually got a couple of raves, would be Alan Frazier, how he has really helped professionalize that department as our zoning enforcement officer. And years ago, you can attest to this too, Mark, we would have people in here all the time complaining about zoning decisions because they seemed arbitrary and they didn't understand why the decision was made. So that is, he's so appreciated and that he's working with our residents is wonderful. And then Liz with that street, the Mass Works, everything else you do. But yeah, that really is going to be very impactful for not just the residents of Main Street and the people who travel Ring Road, but, you know, the whole town. So it's a very good thing. So thank you very much. All right. Do we have anything else?
Done.
All right. So we meet again on the.
Fifth.
August 5th. Wow, already. All right. So our next meeting is August 5th and that's it. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Aye. Good night.
I was shaking my head. You're back.[1785.66]